This is a regular meeting for August 16th, 2016. Please rise for a moment for prayer and reflection and pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're from Operation Night, and we just wanted to let you know that the Hudson Black Arts and Cultural Festival will be rescheduled to Saturday, the Saturday, August 20th, and starts at 12:30. We can't stay here long, so we just wanted to...we should get that out early.
Where does that parade begin when they start to walk down?
The parade down Warren Street.
The parade down Warren Street is a festival.
The parade will go to the waterfront.
So is it from Seventh Street or from the Opera House?
I think it's from Seventh Street.
Seventh Street Court?
Yes.
Thank you. Torque Colm Rule.
President Destefano.
Present.
Alvin Donahue.
Present.
Friedman.
Here.
Corica.
Present.
Haddad.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Mia.
Here.
Moore.
Yes.
O'Hara.
There.
Rector.
Present.
And Scolera.
Present.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurers' Record as of July 31st, 2016, and place it on file. Tiffany Alexis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Committee reports. I have a motion and a second to place the committee reports on file. Cilla, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. List of bills are on your desk. May I have a motion and a second to pay the bills? Tiffany. Second. Mike. Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scolera.
Aye.
Carry.
Communications. Happy of a letter from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding the Kermit application for A. Colaruso, Son &amp; Sons Incorporated to facilitate the replacement of an existing concrete and wood bulkhead and the stabilization of an eroded shoreline site location once identified South Front Street. Second communication from Alapine Bank in the city for a recent contribution to recognize the crisis in the number of unwanted felines in the city. And third communication is from legal advisor Ken Dow issuing an opinion on the elements of introduction, presentation... That's aging. Go ahead. Aging and enacting of local laws. May I have a motion and a second to receive these communications and place them on file? Tiffany. Lauren.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Last we planned, when you first saw this, I asked that we get a list of the federal state of legal authorization back to the reply. Got a reference on the second page in the fourth-to-last paragraph. I was wondering if you got that list.
No. I don't have the information.
How about ETNA, no information? Maybe by next month?
I will...I will take it. So I have a motion and a second. May I have...all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Resolutions. First resolution is appointing commissioners of deeds Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Second resolution authorizing the transfer of funds to the Adult Recreation Personal Services Account. Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scolera. Carry.
Question. Do you have the name of the person who will be working at the new apartment at CMH?
The name of the employee is Cher. Is that correct? What is her last name? Do you know?
I don't know.
Cher. And when...and she'll start when?
You start or he starts? Thank you. Okay, the next resolution is in support of issuing driver's licenses to New York State residents regardless of immigration status. Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scolera. Carry.
This never had a...never had a round before. Threw me off. Authorizing the trans...next resolution authorizing the transfer of funds...excuse me.
Port.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The board.
I'm gonna head...so you threw me off. Okay. Next resolution approving the agreement with TGW Consulting Incorporated for grant writing services. Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scolera.
Aye.
Carry.
Resolution number five authorizing the transfer of funds within the public works and sewer department accounts may have an introduction in a second please. Bob Henry. Any discussion? Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carry.
Resolution number six authorizing agreements for sewer line repair of property located at 32 North Fifth Street, Hudson, New York, and adding the cost to the property tax bill. May I have an introduction in a second please? Rick.
I have a question. There's a typo. Whereas first paragraph says 32 North Fifth Street.
Is it Tarryville?
Any other discussion?
What was the correction?
What was the correct?
It's the address. It's North Fifth Street. It's not Columbia Street. It's in the first paragraph.
The title of the resolution, North Fifth, is the correct one.
Right. That's right.
Is Tarryville Columbia?
It's 32 North Fifth Street.
Oh. Oh, oh, I got it.
And it's correct in the final paragraph. Anything else? Any other discussion? So we had an introduction by Rick. Can I have a second please? Henry. Roke Colvo.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scolera. Carry.
Are they here?
Yeah.
The next...I just want to address the next item. The...yeah, the Farnie Gold Proposition that came forth. And at the time of the last meeting, it was circulated. It was part of the package that went out and fell on your desk as part of the meeting package and was therefore presented to EGW. And then there was a...it's been the practice that having motion to lay things like that on the desks of the members. But there were...it's not...laying on the desks or presenting a bill, a proposed law to the members is just a matter of fact. If it happens, it happens. And so there isn't a vote to be taken on it. These kind of things can be accomplished by physically putting it on desks. It can be accomplished by mailing to the members. But it's...the whole issue is...the purpose of it is that local laws should not be introduced, thrown in front of people, and a vote taken before there's been a chance to go through them thoroughly and for the members to understand them. So there is a requirement of state law that local laws have to be presented so that the members have the chance to review it for an ample amount of time. So it's just simply a factual matter that it has to be on the desk eight days ahead. Or there's said there are other ways to accomplish the same thing. And there's case law. Court of Appeals were...you know, it was accomplished when the village attorney forwarded it to the members. And the court went on to say it was clear it was in the possession of the board members. So it's...there's no decision to be made about it. If it is done as a matter of fact, it...it's there. You have it. So in two local laws earlier this year, it came up. The motion was made. It was just manlessly accepted. So it caught my eye that it was kind of irrelevant because everybody agreed to it. But then when it actually was turned down, you know, I had to look at it. And essentially, the vote to deny the fact just doesn't carry any weight. It was in fact put on your desks. You know, it aged and, you know, therefore, action couldn't be taken on it. You don't have to take any action on it or any other local law for that matter. But once the thing has actually been distributed as a matter of fact and the aging takes place, then you can proceed on it. So...yeah, and that's basically what it is. So there's really not...that's something in the future when there's a local law and when it is circulated, then the distribution has been accomplished. And there doesn't need to be any vote, and there really can't be a vote to deny the place. And as I said, there's no need to make anything further on it, but I just wanted to raise that as a matter of procedure.
It's obvious that it can't be just accepted as we don't do anything about it, just accept it.
Well, that's...every member has individual prerogatives. As an elected representative of your constituents, an elected member of the legislature, each one of you has the right to introduce laws or propose laws for consideration by the whole body. You don't need anybody else to help you. You don't need anybody to second it. Any one of you can come in here with a proposed local law and say, "I am proposing this." And if you have it in final form, written that just as enacted, and you distribute it to all of your colleagues, eight days later, someone can move to bring that up and vote on it and enact it. Nobody has to accept it. Nobody has...at that stage, you are acting on your own. You can introduce a law and put it around to your colleagues, and then it's...it's there. Takes the whole body to actually vote on it. But at the preliminary stages, every one of you has that authority. And so the board...the body as a whole can't reject it at that point. If you're the only one who even wants to vote on it, when the time comes to vote, you may move to vote, and if nobody seconds it, the thing doesn't even get voted on. Obviously, it can come up or vote and fail. So the outcome is in the hands of the body, but you can't stop it from coming in in the first place. Every member has the prerogative and the right to bring things in. Is that enough?
What?
As an introduction?
Sure.
Sure. If you want to introduce it to...all that does is get the ball rolling. Got it. Anyway, maybe just to go a little further. There basically...I wrote a memo that you all have. There are three things that I addressed, three distinct parts, elements, to get a local law passed. And there's other...I didn't cover it comprehensively. There's secret, and there's meetings, and notice, and all that's public hearings possibly. But the three phases. First is an introduction, and that's what anybody can come and say, "I'm introducing the proposed local law to do this." That does not have to be very well fleshed out. It doesn't need to be extensively written out. It can be incomplete. It doesn't have to be in final form. But essentially, you're putting the world on notice that you are going to be producing legislation on a subject. That's a pretty minor thing, but that does have to be done at a public meeting so that there is notice to the world that you're going to be doing something on this. Then, at some point along the way, the thing has to be put in the final form. That's the form, the exact text and the language that would actually be enacted. When it's in that form, final form, it has to be distributed to all the members. And once it's in the final form, you need eight days to pass, seven not counting Sundays is the way to start a law. You have to wait eight days for everyone to have the chance to understand it before a vote can be taken. So those are the three main steps that have to be taken along the way. So I just wanted to...you know, there was some oddities, and I thought it was worth writing a memo and outline those processes.
Thank you. Any new business?
I have a question. I'd like to know the whereabouts of the resolution for the residential parking of at CMH.
Yes. I researched that. It will take a home rule of message. There are several of these. They're under Section 1640 of the Vehicle and Traffic Law. Lots of cities, villages...there are a number of these where there are home rule laws that authorize municipalities to create parking permit systems. Basically, you can...locally, you can do parking that does not distinguish between people. You know, parking meters, whoever drives up puts their meter, and you can do that locally. But if you're going to do something that gives benefits to residents over non-residents or people, you know, that distinguishes or discriminates among people, you can't do that at the local level. And so that does take a home rule law. And there are quite a number of them. I can give you...I can give you a couple of copies of them. They're similar to the lodging tax thing. They're sort of a basic template that gets used. It's some variation, but they're...they have things in common.
But do we attach what we approved to this?
It would be the same process as that...is the lodging tax, where you would prepare a law as a draft law. It doesn't get enacted because there's no authority to enact it at this point. Then that would get sent out for the resolution to Albany. There will have to be a state law, home rule law passed, that authorizes whatever it is the council has drawn up. They have to authorize it. And when that gets passed, signed by the governor, which, you know, is going to be a while at this point, then the law that you originally drafted up can be enacted. But there are a couple of...there's a case that specifically ruled that the village did not have that lawful authority without the home rule. There are a lot of cities and municipalities that have obtained them, and there's a whole string of them in the vehicle and traffic law. So it seems that that's the way it has to be done. So what's the next action?
So what's the next step?
You could have enacted...well, you're not enacting it. You're...you have to show the state what you want to do so that the state law can...so you make sure that the state law that authorizes it encompasses what you want to do. So it has to be... So should we call this passing a draft local law? Basically. I think that's fair enough.
Yeah, we already have it.
Yeah. So you haven't. And you...so... We have that.
Yeah. So would I need a resolution to...to pass it through home rule?
Yeah. Probably won't actually get done until it's almost a year and a half. Session next spring if it comes. I don't think it'll be this year. But we might as well get more. Get it up there.
Anything else? Any other new business? Tonight, I have...we have Eric Bell from the AmeriCorp Group. He'd like to make a brief presentation. We have on our desks applications, same applications for, you know, somebody who might be interested in joining AmeriCorp. But he's going to give us a presentation tonight about what AmeriCorp does, how they've done some work here in the city, and what we may be able to do to give them more work thereby giving us help. So Eric, would you please...
Thank you, thank you. I guess I can speak from here or you want to go anywhere? Perfect. Well, first for who...for those who I haven't had a chance to meet, my name is Eric Bell, and I have the honor of serving as a director at the Hudson Promise Corps. I've been a part of AmeriCorp, actually, since its inception back in 1994. I come from a rich history of AmeriCorp back in New York City, and I've kind of made my way around the state, and I'm happy to be now a part of the Hudson Corp. I just asked to come and talk to you guys about AmeriCorp because what has become perfectly clear...I've actually been up here for almost a year now, and I've heard the topic of AmeriCorp in many different circles, and what became clear to me was that unfortunately, not a lot of folks were clear what AmeriCorp was. I'll try to give you my elevated speech and make it as quick as possible. At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is give residents here in Hudson an opportunity to work and save themselves. What's not going to happen, we all know...I mean, let me back up a step. There's a lot of challenges all across the country. AmeriCorp is a community service initiative that gives residents an opportunity to be a part of the change, the fixing of their communities. Over the past three years here in the Hudson community, in case you did not know, over 100 young...100 people have had the opportunity to participate in the Hudson Promise Corps. They've come and they've rehabbed the youth center. They've done cleanups at Oakdale Park. They've done paintings. They've cleaned playgrounds. They've done revitalization projects all across the...all across the community. We are primarily...we have been primarily serving in four different areas, working with the Division of Youth or Department of Youth. Obviously, there at the youth center. Over the summer, we had AmeriCorp workers working at Oakdale. We've been working with the intermediate school. We are looking to move forward and continue working with the intermediate school, but also have AmeriCorp workers serving as mentors inside the junior high school going next year. We've also been supporting the Promise Neighborhood Initiative down on 3rd...on 2nd, forgive me. But of course, we've been also working with MHA, who is actually the organization here in Hudson that's coordinating the AmeriCorp program. So AmeriCorp is a program of MHA. Let me not ever try to forget that.
MHA is...
The Mental Health Association, or that 713 unit. Apologize for...it's a lot of acronyms. I apologize, man. Please forgive me. So I wanted to come because this is a very interesting time of the year because we're in recruitment mode. This year, we're looking to hire 53 individuals in different capacities. Some is minimum time, which meaning they'll work for 300 service hours. That's what we call service hours. Then we have part-time or half-time, which is 900 service hours. And then we have a full-time capacity, which is, excuse me, 1,700 hours. And in return for their volunteerism, they actually qualify...well, first, they'll get a very modest living stipend, but they're also at the conclusion of their service time, they'll actually qualify for some educational support. So depending on which classification you come in, minimum part and/or full, you can actually get money for college. For those who've completed their collegiate, like me, and you're still working on college bills, you can actually serve and actually utilize the money that you...the award that you earn to pay old college bills. So this is an absolute win-win scenario. We are so blessed here in Hudson to have this opportunity because it gives, you know, folks an opportunity to serve. So in addition to those four locations where we have been traditionally working, we're adding a new part of our...a new initiative to what we're trying to do in our deliverables. We're looking forward to working with the seniors. And I think once upon a time in one of your meetings, that topic did come up. We are looking forward to supporting the activities in the seniors because as we look forward, we know how critical they are, and not just this community, in all communities as a part of our whole entity. So we're looking forward to lending some support with them. We have been working with the mayor and trying to coordinate that. We are looking to, you know, start, hit the ground running on that in September, and that's kind of in an elevator pitch. It's a little bit about who we are. So that's kind of what I wanted to come and talk to you about. What I did distribute was some applications. So if you know some folk, a person who could qualify, who could do a great job, who could really benefit from this program, we look forward to meeting them. There are some applications. I'll leave a few more at the front desk. So please do not hesitate to kind of send them our way because AmeriCorp wins. And we want to thank you guys for being supportive of AmeriCorp. There's a lot of folks here in this room that I have seen, and they have been supporting us since, you know, since its inception, and I look forward to your continued support. Thank you for giving me a few moments to talk about AmeriCorp.
Eric, can you sit down because I know some of my...give them the minimal qualifications and then some things that could possibly disqualify you?
Okay. Well, that's...there's a ton. There's a ton of...there's a ton of qualifications. At the end of the day, there's...you have to be 18 and over. That's noted. And one of the things...one of the many roles you serve as AmeriCorp here in Hudson is mentors. What we all do know is that our young people here, they need positive mentors. They need people to look up to that they can kind of say, "Hey, when I get older, I want to be with that." So that's a huge component of our program. I didn't want to go too deep. See, that's not the elevator pitch. That's the longer version. But nonetheless, that's a little bit about, you know, there...of course, there's a rigorous background check that goes on because I'm sure you all understand, anybody we put in front of our children and any vulnerable population, we need to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, that, you know, the right people are serving and that, you know... And so there are some things that can exclude you, but then there's something...you know, there's some things AmeriCorp has some leniency to. We know that not everybody has had a, you know, an unblemished path, but that doesn't mean that that necessarily, you know, dictates how you're going to live your future. So that's an individualized scenario, individualized basis. But in a nutshell, you know, 18 and over, you can serve. And that's what's important for us because service is...you could be at any age to serve, and there's talent at all ages. So we look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes, hi. I can... There's a question, I'm sorry.
I would like to know when they're...when they're applied for this job and they're granted a position, how long is the job for? Is it ongoing? Is it forever? Do they climb up the ladder or...
Sure. Well, the way it works with AmeriCorp, you can actually serve in upwards of two full-time years. So let's say for an example, year one, you wanted to start...it's a year... So let's say, for an example, year one, you wanted to start, it's a year, 1,700 hours. You know, it takes about 35 hours a week, almost 11 months to do 1,700 hours. So that's like a year placement. At the conclusion of that, you have the opportunity to apply again as a full-timer. You can do four part-time years. You can do a ton of minimum time, you know, just as long as they calculate up to full-time. So there's many different configurations, but you can do upwards into two years. One of the things I love about AmeriCorp is that it's not just a New York State initiative. AmeriCorp is all across the country. One of the things we were so excited about is that over the past two years, we've had AmeriCorp who have transferred. It's nothing like receiving a phone call from a nice young lady who served at the state of Washington all the way across the country and said, "I served one year in AmeriCorp, I'm relocating to the East Coast. I would love the opportunity to come and serve." You know, you're talking about a person who comes there, they're very familiar with the program, and they have a world of experiences that you would love to tap into. So we were able to kind of do that. So it's the whole, you know, nationwide connection of AmeriCorp that makes it extremely exciting for a lot of people. Because as you well know, especially when you're young, you're a very transient population. So you may start in Hudson today, but come next year, you know, people can go off to college, they can serve in their respective location. Some folks relocate and go to the other sides of the country. It's not bad to pick up the phone and say, "Hey, I did a year somewhere, you know, would you consider me?" That's like a nice fraternity of sorts to be a part of. So that's a really win-win type of situation.
So after two years of full-time person can we apply?
After two years of full-time -- I mean, hopefully, one of the things we always talk about, we talk about life after AmeriCorp. So one of the things, we're always, it's part of my job, I get paid the not-so-big bucks, is always trying to talk about opportunities when your AmeriCorp time is over. Of course, in an ideal scenario, those entities I talk to, hopefully, you've served and you did a good job, and that those folks see you as talent, and something that they want to retain. So I'm engaging in conversations with those folks to talk about, "Hey, you've had this guy, gal, for two years, you know, what additional opportunities there may be?" Full-time opportunities. And I'm quite sure that if you are an employer, you've had somebody for two years, and they've done a good job, you want to retain that talent. Because we all know how tough it is to get talent. So you don't just let talent walk back through the door, you try your best to try to retain talent as best possible. So that's kind of what life after AmeriCorp is all about. That's what I spend -- that's what I'm currently engaged in right now in this part of the year.
I think it's a wonderful program, especially since there are a need of jobs
Yes.
in the city of Hudson, and it's giving great opportunity and on a rotating basis so everyone can get a chance.
Yes.
I see here also, which is a wonderful thing, because a lot of people, especially who receive food stamps or live in public housing, any income you get, your rent increases. So I see here that AmeriCorp living stipend does not impact public assistance eligibility, food stamps, housing, et cetera. So I think that's good. It takes a lot of pressure off the person who's applying and working. Thank you.
I mean, I appreciate you for bringing that up. Um, yes, as one of the caveats to your participation in AmeriCorp, it's not supposed to count against your income. So a lot of folks may be getting support and benefits from a lot of different areas. Part of the responsibility is that before you engage in AmeriCorp, that you have those conversations. Hopefully, AmeriCorp has been circulating now that a lot of those entities now know that, hey, this is a separate piece. And so folks are not now being charged rent when they're all -- their full rent, when in all actuality, they can't pay that because the living stipend is literally that modest, that small. So you're right, it's not supposed to count against your rent, it's not supposed to count against any of the benefits that you are receiving, and it gives people the opportunity to serve. Because what we found out was, a lot of people don't serve, they don't volunteer because, you know, unfortunately, they still got to be able to keep the lights on and keep a roof over their heads so that the numbers wasn't adding up. But thank you for bringing that out. I appreciate that. Are there any other questions?
Anything else?
Once again, counsel, thank you for the good use of time. I claim due.
Thank you, Eric. Any other business for the council tonight?
I'd like to make an announcement. There's a member of our audience here who has covered, is it Oak, John, or did I say something? There's a reporter here, an editor, and chronicler of events in this fair city. He's been doing it for many, many years, and both Mary and I have been reading his columns and articles with interest and gratitude for the insights he has displayed and about the inner workings of our community. And he's moving on to a teaching assignment, I believe, at SUNY in Albany.
Okay, that being said, congratulations. Any other business? Okay. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, please, if you have any motions tonight, please make sure you sign the papers. And may I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Hen -- Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Sir?
I wanted to thank everyone on behalf of all of the immigrants for having passed the resolution in support of driver's license access. It's very important for the immigrant community, this vote of confidence. And perhaps it will be an example to other municipalities in the state of New York. Thank you so much for your support.
All in favor? Post?